Okay, like call the school district of North Monahawea Board meeting on order Monday, February 23rd, 2015 at 7:09. Next is roll call.
Chisholm?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Kowalski?
Here.
Pila?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is report of public notices.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Public notices were posted on Thursday, February 19th at the village administration building, the school district building, administration office, and also US Bank. They're also mailed on that same date, Thursday, February 19th, 2015, to the reporter, KFIZ, WF1-107, and also 97.7 Newsweek.
Please stand for the collection.
I pledge allegiance to the Fray of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Does any board member have any changes to note? Seeing none, we'll approve the minutes as presented. Next item on the agenda is the treasure report. Mr. Chisholm?
Mr. Duffy, cash on hand balance as of January 26th, 2015 was $1,396,718.21. Total receipts for the period $2,737,000... I'm sorry, $2,737,384.80. And expenditures, total expenditures, $1,388,67.12, leaving a cash on hand balance as February 23rd, $149,377.61. Also distributed to the board for your review is payments scheduled today in the amount of $1,378,142.61.
I want you to forward to the board for action.
Second.
Second, Mr. Pila. Discussion.
I just have one question. Bill's, probably Dave can probably answer this one. Bleacher service for $4,333. What does that one work for?
I'm sorry?
Bleacher service, you got a $4,000.
Bleacher inspection for VR bleachers, you have to have it on yearly, is that it all?
Nope. Corvus Industries, bleacher service. Check date was 2/23. Check 2/70, $4,333.
That's gotta be the, through the VR bleachers, that's probably a service that they sub along through. They do the inspection and then a company go in and service some.
Okay, so all bleachers or just one set?
Bessie Allen, they actually inspect the Oriole complex, Horace Mann, and Bessie Allen.
Okay, that's another yearly thing?
Yes.
Assuming they didn't do the Oriole complex recently. They do that in the middle of the winter?
No, they inspected it in, probably, end of October.
Or any other questions?
I have one and I don't know if anyone can answer that. I always kind of look over what our technology repair costs are and see how we're doing. I see quite a few iPads in the repair bill. Is this just because they're now starting to be older units that need attention? Probably half a dozen of them.
Very well could be. Well, we have, one of the things that you'll see with repair, Doug Forsyth and his computer repair class, that would probably be through Tom. Through Tom and Tom Dieter. And very well could be, I mean, most of our, all of our staff iPads are four years old, so, four to five years old, so that could be, there's a cord under, inside that sometimes comes out, so you have to put in, and sometimes could be screens or stuff, so those fixes actually are cheaper than buying in one, in some senses. You're also really cool, we're down, I just talked to Heartland right now, we're gonna be down to maybe once a month of having Heartland here on-site. We've really been able to alleviate the need for Heartland, and you will see an increase in some costs for prices or for pieces for the Chromebooks, because currently they're no longer serviced by Tom Dieter. Doug's class doesn't. So Doug's class, computer repair is setting up our computers, taking care of problems, fixing Chromebooks, doing an absolutely phenomenal job. So we're able to in-house it, and that computer repair class this year is probably the most authentic computer repair class that there's been, so. And the cool thing is, like, these computers here, from our last lease, or our first ever lease, have we paid off, probably three years ago, they're seven years old. What we're doing now is buying RAM sticks, two 4G RAM sticks, so it's jacking it up from 2G to 8G, and we're getting, and these are pretty much just word processing and internet searching ones, so the repair class, those RAM sticks cost about $70, $70, $80, make these almost brand new. So, it's, they've been doing a great job, and these are kind of like working on a 56 Chevy. You can still work on these, and new computers or those iPads are so small and stuff, it's difficult, so they're really enjoying parting those out, making them much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Duffy?
Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
And Hart, yes, motion care.
Next item on the agenda is the clerk report. Mr. Hart?
The board, first of all, received a thank you note for the memorial sent on behalf of Jerry Scadella and his father, Gino Scadella, passed away recently. And then the donations report this month, Springs Booster Club donated $100 for wrestling program, Floor Quest, $100 for wrestling, Colasco de Fondalac, $100 for the Oriole Way, PBIS program, I believe, and Kimberly Clark, a $1,000 matching donation for various Horace Mann projects, matching the Benke family donation of the same amount. And then a number of donations to the Food for Thought Cafe, $100 each from Immel Insurance and the Seidoff family, and $50 donations from Samantha Flood, Beth Strady, Melanie Collin, Kim and Bonnie Dieter, Allison Christ Tizakis, the Broton family, and Janet Wiegand. And all, and one or all employees of the district as well, which is really nice. That's all that I have.
Side note, the cafe's open to the optimists on Thursday. They're having their meal there, and then they give away the tri-star awards at the boys' game.
Okay, next item on the agenda is student calls report.
So past news, the student council held a winter fall dance on February 7th. For the first winter dance we've had in many years, so I've been told it was a pretty successful, half the school population attending. Also, on the week of Valentine's Day, we had a flower sale. We sold 225 flowers to students, different colors, signify different things, white flowers, friendship, paper crushes, red for love. All right, and then on the future agenda, family night will be held on April 22nd. We're setting starting plans for that. And then the student council officers will be getting together, will be meeting up to talk about our current constitution and revise as needed. That's all I have.
All right. Next item is citizen's input. I will open citizen's input at 7:18. Any citizen wishing to be heard? Any citizen wishing to be heard? And one final time, any citizen wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close citizen's input at 7:19. Next, on the agenda is super tennis report.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Duffy. First off, quickly, we're gonna do a great, it seems like a yearly tradition, of looking at some incredible artwork that Alice helps to foster and to nominate, and it's getting shown at Madison, at the Capitol, actually is being shown right now, and gonna be honored. And then we have David Crew from Shanken on his yearly track out to the district to tell you a little bit more about the audit and the financial wherewithal of the district. So, what I'd like to do right now is Dumb the Children, Lizzie, Bruce, or Reed, we're here, but we do our, we do have our art goddess, I believe is what we...
It is the art goddess.
Art goddess, not matriarch, instead of with art goddess.
It's a wonderful story, I will elaborate, because I like the story. We have our artists in residence, our annual artists in residence every year, and we were introducing and talking, and Aaron came for our luncheon, and he referred to me as the art matriarch, and I gave him a look, and he clicked it, he changed it so rapidly to, oh, and art goddess. And I said, no, I like that one. That one will work, even though I know that I'm not a spring chicken anymore. Our students, I'm a member of the Wisconsin Art Education Association, and the group does a lot of lovely things, conventions and advocacy for students, and an annual art show. It's jury. I was able to send five pieces to the regional show, and from the regional show, it's a jury. Regional show was in NINA at the Mailer Art Class Museum, Bergstrom Mailer Art Class Museum, and a number of the students with their families did come to attend the reception. And then from that process, three pieces were selected to go to the state capitol. From the state capitol, they may receive other accolades. We have some incredible artists at our school who really know how to think and use creative problem solving, and these are the results that will be featured at the capitol, are featured at the capitol, and represent our lovely students. So, here they are. Lizzie is in third grade, watercolor. Bruce is in, I think, no, second grade. Tempura, that one actually was just what I would call a happy surprise. It's just an amazing piece, the judge at Bergstrom could not stop talking about this piece. And I think it's absolutely delightful.
What makes it that?
If you do Bruce, you would really, really love it even more, so.
Like, what sets this one off? Like, what's it talking about? Because you had that on that.
Oh, okay. Art can't look perfect. It needs to have what I call magic, and it has to have energy. And the way he put the colors down on the big chicken, and the extended legs, and just the vibrant way that he worked with it, you can feel the texture of the feathers, the bright warm colors in the background just block incredibly and create such a wonderful contrast. But more than anything, I would compare it to that musician that stands up and sings the most beautiful song with every note in place, and then the next person stands up, and you just drop your teeth and you go, whoa. It's that thing. And it's the star power of a certain piece, and that piece has star power. This is Reed Billings, he's in fifth grade. I know that he's been out of school Friday and Monday, there's a lot of stuff going around. Just a fabulous young man, who's a tremendous gentleman, and created an amazing light source, and every single color that is on that painting, and the colors aren't true because of the way they show up, were created by him. They were only given the mixing primaries, which is yellow, magenta, inter白色, and then white. Those are the only colors they have, and they create every other color. So it's a wonderful discovery learning unit, and they're encouraged to use light source. And they're studying one of the artists who will be at Friendship Learning Center as a featured displayer. She's from Green Lake, her name is Leslie Trewin, and she's nationally known, and we're studying her painting style. So, the gallery, as I call it, will be filled with works of art by fourth and fifth graders who are learning the style that she uses. But I don't believe she mixes all the colors, but we are. And every time I come here, I invite the board members to come on Tuesday, March 24th this year, for our Artist in Residence Day.
It's amazing.
I know a number of you have come. We have artists who do hands-on workshops with the students, and then we have artists who do what I would call show and tell in the hall. And we have the Crum de La Crum, we even have an art teacher from St. Mary's Springs, the one and only Pat Ryer this year. And it's, it will be wonderful, and the artists will be in the halls from 9:00 until 11:30, and from 1:00 until 3:15. Those are the times they will be in the halls. We'll be taking a short break in the library for luncheon. You're more than welcome to join us for any part of the day. It's a delightful day. The artists are funded through a grant from the Fundary Foundation. The materials are from fundraisers or other sources that I can't get.
Mass emailings for things that roll into the paper.
And, so these are our students, they've gone to state. It's like our team going to state, this is artwork. It's a little bit different, but equally as fabulous. And I do thank the school board, our superintendent, and Melanie, my immediate supervisor, for giving art a chance to shine in this district.
And I'd just like to say to Alice, she is, I think, probably our number one talent scout, that finds talent in every one of our kids, and if it wasn't for her hard work of being dedicated and making things happen for our kids, and then nominating and going through the process of doing this, we wouldn't have that. And I remember when we got educator effectiveness, and we were sitting in a meeting as administrators, and you look at effective teachers, you look at a need of improvement, you look at distinguished teachers, and I remember asking the question, guys, who do we have that's distinguished? The first word and the only name that came out from everybody that we could say, bar none, this person is a distinguished educator, is Alice Tizakis. So, she gives so much value to our district, support to our kids, these are things that you're never gonna find in standardized tests, but they're also something that we will never ever stop supporting or believing in because of what they do so. Alice, thanks for all that you do. All right. Now, something that's just as magical, just as wonderful, is called an audit. An actuary finds wonder and amazement in numbers. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dave, who is, or thank you for your flexibility, he's gonna come in January, but things just didn't work anyway, so thank you very much. And what you guys have is in front of you. You've been prepared and given two different books that Dave will go through, and then what I will do is over here, I will go and hopefully for everybody out here, go through the books and explain as we go. Do we have another summary? All right. Thank you very much.
We're gonna start with the bond document. The bond document represents the financial statements and results of operations of the district for the year into June 30th. Just wanted to point out, on page one, really, page one of the annual financial report, it's titled Independent Audit Report. This is really what we're talking about when we go through the audit. It starts with the financial statements, the first paragraph. These are contained all the required financial statements. Management of your district is really responsible. They maintain the financial records throughout the year. Our responsibility is, the next group of paragraphs, is really to come in, make sure that the financial information that is provided, and we review it, take the sample of transactions that we test, to make sure they're promptly accounted for. And then the key thing is really the last paragraph on page one is the opinions paragraph, where we indicate that the financial statements you have in front of you accurately reflects the financial position of results of operation. So, it is what is known as an unmodified or crung opinion, the best opinion you can receive of any financial statements. If you turn over to page two, there's a number of other things that are contained within this document. Primarily, there's a management's discussion and analysis, and some budgetary comparisons that are called required supplemental information, so we would encourage the board to review that information. Near the back of the report is what we call other information, which is really a report on the federal and state financial assistance. Because you receive federal and state financial assistance, we do have to complete a very specialized audit on those programs that deal primarily with the compliance, and ensure that the district does comply with both federal and state laws related to those funds. So, those reports are in the back. Our audit did not have any compliance exceptions, so a clear opinion on those.
Any questions?
And then once, I know that Dave, I can go through everything verbatim, but afterwards, as you look at these documents and digest them, if you have anything that you have a question on, or you want more information, Maria can answer those, or she can always get ahold of Dave and his team at Shanken, who can get you more information about.
Next couple pages are then management discussion, so I'd encourage the board to review that. It's really kind of a near to what happened. Very near, informative, well done. Then starting on page 10, page 10 starts the basic financial statements. The first two statements really represent the district as if you were a for-profit enterprise, meaning all the assets of the district, all the liabilities of the district, and then your net position or ownership. Just a couple of things to point out, if you look at your total assets, your total assets were about $19.1 million last year, about $18.7 million this year. Major change is really the use of capital assets. You can see that accumulated depreciation. As facilities age, they get depreciated. You can see that that line did show an increase from about $9 million to about $9.5 or $9.6. That's really the major change in the two years of operating perspective. If you go down to the liabilities perspective, you can see that the major change, everything looks very comparable between the two years, but when we look at the long-term obligations, you can see the amount due in more than one year is going down by over $1 million. That's really the retirement of the long-term obligations on the facilities, and each year you do levy property taxes for the retirement, so each year you do see an increase in the long-term obligations, until you do issue some more than that at some point in time. Your long-term, your liabilities basically increased by that principal retirement that was occurring the prior year. And then your net position or net ownership is really how much you own of the facility. So as assets depreciate, it reduces that, as you pay them off, when you pay your principal and increases in your operations, so really you can see that you did increase your net position, once again primarily due to the retirement of debt that was in excess of the assets being depreciated. So, the assets typically last longer than the debt that is used to finance. Any questions? And then page 11 and 12, or page 10 was a snapshot, page 11 and 12 goes through what happened between the two fiscal years. There's a lot of numbers here, but the key thing is that net change in position. You can see you had a decrease in governmental funds, an overall, over $700,000, really once again, the retirement of the long-term obligations, and offsetting depreciation. Very good year, and we'll see, you know, if we get into your fund financials. And starting on page 13, page 13 shows your funds on the basis of which you adopt your budget. So, you can see each of the funds, you can see assets, liabilities, but instead of net position, you see fund balance, because fund balance is more of a measure of liquidity versus a long-term net ownership. So you can see that overall, your fund balance are very consistent. We'll talk a little bit about that later in the second document. So this is really how you adopt your annual budget. And then if we turn to page 15, page 15 is really, once again, what happened in the current year. So it shows that your total revenues were about $15.5 million, and from the district's governmental funds, you can see how much of that relates to property taxes, about 4.6 million, how much of that relates to state intergovernmental aids, about $8.4 million, and then how much of that relates to federal sources, about $700,000. So, those are the primary inter-district, those are the primary sources. When we look at what you spent, you spent about $15.8 million this year, $15.8, it's very comparable on an overall basis. If we look at your general fund, your general fund did decrease about $55,000, but if you looked at the budget you adopted, you projected a little bit greater of a decrease in your fund balance, so from that perspective, you had a very good budget year in 2014. And overall, your fund balance just decreased about $8,000. Any questions? In the rest of the report, are various different notes that are designed to complement the report. It goes through the longer debt position, it goes through the capital assets. Certainly, there's a lot of information there, but, you know, I'd encourage the board, if you have any questions on any of the notes, we certainly can go through it, it's just a lot of additional information on really what happened in 2013, it gave you some additional, how many different obligations in your cash position.
Was there anything with anomaly, or anything that...
Very similar to what I saw here, nothing unusual. You know, when you look, when we look through your operations, you can see from last year to this year, very consistent years, very normal years, and nothing really unusual. Then we go to the second document. The second document is a staple document, which the annual financial report that we just walked through is kind of a complete representation of a financial position. The staple document goes through a number of communications that we communicate to the board, and also some information that we do enhance and put into the financial that is slightly, some additional implications for you. Starting on page one through page four, or three, is an introduction. We talked a little bit about our responsibility, we talked a little bit about the federal and state grants, so we are completing the audit in accordance with all the requirements. You know, your audit gets submitted to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, who does review it, goes through it, and if there's any questions, we'll follow up with additional questions. But from a perspective, your audit is very consistent with all the other audits of school districts, our firm, the audit of 70 different school districts within Wisconsin, and certainly your financial statement position, we talked a little bit about that, it's certainly a very strong financial position in the thought. Starting on page two, we do talk about internal controls. We do have one item that we do report to the board from an efficiency, and that's in the middle of page two, it's called preparation of the annual financial report. Ultimately, as I said, we do about 70 school districts, probably about 68 of those, and when we prepare the report, we don't play, just some of our larger school districts, like a Green Bay or so, do their own report, but the majority of them don't, and so we, it's just a disclosure that says that we are, financial statements of the district's financial performance. Then on bottom, page two, talks about estimates, and we talk about, you know, the audit report, we do do sample testing of all the different types of transactions, but there's really three areas where there are estimates embedded in your financial statements. The first area is really the length, how long buildings are gonna last, how's one equipment's gonna last, that's unknown. I mean, what we do is we look at the length that are assigned by the district, and they gotta be for reason of oldness, certainly some may last longer, some may last shorter a period of time, so that's an estimate. You do have another post-employment benefit, that we do rely on actuarial projection of future payments, so clearly it's not gonna exactly follow the projection by the actuary, but it is a reasonable estimate. And then there is some employee compensation, so our role is really to review, make sure those things are consistent. So our role is really to review, make sure those things are consistent, and they are. Actual results will vary from those estimates. And then page three goes through how the audit went. Did we have any disagreements? Was the management, you know, representing everything? Page three says that, from our perspective, the audit went very well. We think we have a very good relationship with here at the district. It's important, we do work with Maria in some of the finance area, but because of the grants, we do work with other people on some of the grant programs, and everyone was very cooperative. Does take a little bit of time from everyone here at the district, and from our perspective, they all were very, we appreciate that. Any questions on that?
Just really quickly, as we were talking, we just had our last, our most recent, every three years, we have an OPEP report, and key benefits just in that, and it looks at what our post-employment benefits are for our teachers, for our administrators, for all of our retirees. And we saw from three years ago, our OPEP liability is how much, how much did it decrease?
Close to a million, it's almost half of what it was.
So based on the stuff that we were working on with our educators even before Act 10, looking at our post-employment benefit, we've cut our liability in half. So in the long term, which is going to do nothing more than bolster our financial standing also in the future. And that information wasn't available at the time that this was done. So that'll be information that'll be utilized next to look at, and next year we'll get that.
And then page four really goes through two years. So, I mean, when we look at the financial statements, there's a lot of comparatives, but they're in summary total. Here we break it down by, by fund type, so you can see some of the significant activities. If you look at your general fund, which really is your most significant fund, it's your operating fund, you can see as we saw in the audit, you did have a slight decrease in your fund balance, but it was still a positive budget year, and you currently have about 3.5 million in unassigned. That balance, if you just turn to top of page five, we generally recommend that districts have anywhere between 20 and 25 percent of your annual expenditures, which would be somewhere around 3 million to 3.7. So you can see you're right in that ballpark of that range. What's nice about that, many school districts do not have that much, and what they're required to do is short-term borrow, because the revenue flows coming into a district, you get the majority of the revenues, property taxes are six months after the year before you start collecting property taxes, and a lot of your state aids are backflowed into June and July. So a good fund balance allows you to cash all those expenditures in the year. So your cash balance, even though you're looking at the balance, at a period of points in time during the year gets very involved with your cash flow perspective. So from that perspective, because you do maintain a very strong unassigned fund balance, you are able to weather that cash flow. The other funds are very similar, and you can see that the unassigned within the capital projects is a deficit in the district, because we're supporting that in the non-spending program. No real significant change in their financial positions. Very strong, you know, most districts do have short-term borrow, so given the fact that you do not, that this application was in financial strength. Comment two is really looking at the proprietary or food service fund. You did have a growth there in some of the funds that are restricted from food service, so no concern there within that. Any questions on financial? So overall, very strong financial results for 2014, and at the end of 2014, looking to the future. We do have a couple of comments and observations here, you'll pull back. Part of our role is not only to look at the current financial information, but project out what's going to happen in the future for you, and also look at some of your controls. And we are recommending here in comment one, to really look at your policies to make sure that you are adequately approved. All the transactions that we tested were very strong, very, you know, in business sense, but at some point in time, maybe in a general entry or purchase, we think there could be some enhancements on the approval upfront. So from a control perspective, we just think you can enhance our controls, but our testing indicated that everything went very well.
And from those recommendations, we actually implemented some of those already, where anything that I approve for the superintendent's office, or that I would approve, that I would, Maria will approve, anytime that Maria even transfers money from our fund account in order to help us with operations, I then approve that also. So from the recommendations, we've already instituted some redundancies to make it even stronger based on the recommendations.
And then comment two and comment three are really new things, so they're not anything that will specifically affect your day-to-day operations, but you will see the future reports. The first one deals with Gatsby State Number 67 and 68, because the district participates in the Wisconsin Retirement System, which is a pension plan, Gatsby 68 will be effective for next fiscal year. And what it requires, similar to the other post-employment benefits, it does require you to recognize your portion of any shortfall in the Wisconsin Retirement System on your financial statements. The nice thing is, the Wisconsin Retirement System is probably the best-planted state plan, so from that perspective, you could probably see very little, little on your financial statements. If I go to, you know, if we talk about some of the other state plans, you can see some large liabilities that will be reported. The only thing that's going to affect is you're going to have some fluctuations in that balance. And, you know, in discussions with the state retirement system, two years ago, they were underfunded by about 500 million. They projected that they have surplus at the end of December this year because of marketing. So you're going to play a little bit on a marketing perspective, because the Wisconsin Retirement obviously has a lot of investments that fluctuate significantly in marketing and cost structure here. So it's going to affect you a little bit, but, you know, you have a pretty small relationship. The state, the state itself has about 45 percent of that plan, so. Any questions on that? And then comment three just talks about new state single audit guidelines that were issued in December of 2013, which became effective for any new grants received after, on or after December 26, 2014. So it's really the 2015 grants, because you're on the junior end, excuse me, junior end, it's really going to be the grants that you're going to receive starting next fiscal year that are going to have some impact on to your future operations. But it's more of a, it goes through, it goes through two pages of different documentations that kind of talks a little bit about the new changes, so I'd encourage you to look at that. District might have some additional procedures or policies that may be part of that. What is nice is, because there are the increase in the limit for single audits, the district right now might be below that, so any point in time, you may or may not have a single audit. The challenge with the regulations, it really doesn't matter from a day-to-day grant manager stuff, that policies in place. And then the last thing is just a representation from management that they provide. With that, I will entertain any questions that anyone has, like I said, very strong operating, financial results, and very strong testing controls. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, like I said, as you go through those, you're going to see very similarities to the last year, and we'll have our new audit coming up. I'll say a couple of things, and is that Shank has done, our audit last time was even more thorough than the time before, and we're very, the people that we got are big into it, and Maria and the team, end of July, and we make sure that we find out any anomalies or what we can do better, so to be totally transparent. Just on a side note, we also got the fortune of being audited by DPI for food service this year, and that Marie, and Bonnie, and Maria, and then all there, Mark Staff did a great job, and we cast that one very well also. That's where they go and look at applications, and what's going on in the food service, every following, all the guidelines, all that kind of stuff. Facility committees, both of you guys were here for that, it looks like that's going to be going pretty well, we had a good representation there. Look forward to our next meeting, which will be March 9. We're hoping to have Clint from Bray to come explain a little bit about what he did, and explain to the board in November about where our buildings are at, what the result of that study was, and then start talking a little bit more about the needs of the buildings and facilities as we go forward. We're going to have another meeting then, at the end of, at 5 o'clock before the board meeting in March, that will also look at the facilities and talk a little bit more about projected long-term ideas. And then the first Tuesday in, or not the first Tuesday, but the second, Monday in April, all this information will get out to you also. We're going to do a workshop, if you will, for two hours, and Maria's going to facilitate hopefully, and get some more of her business to come down, and it's a great activity that explains how fund, budgeting, and school finance works. So, rough and running, I thought had a good representation, and we're going to also look to Phil, as the board ad says, Mr. Kellogg actually, I told that about having the categories, to make sure that we have all the people represented that we want on that group. So, I'll pray, anybody who is here have anything else to add? I'm at Jerry's Cadell's half-brother too, which I didn't expect, so that was a nice position.
Who was that?
Graham.
Salage.
Salage, yep, James Salage. And now, summer school report, I know that Mr. Duffy had talked a little bit about, about training, physical training, and for credit, and what that looks like. And then also, so we can have kind of an initial conversation, talk about that, get some more data for you. Also, I want to turn it over to Adam and Samantha, we have some extremely exciting things going on that are different this year in summer school, and Adam's about ready to get everything out and start getting those positions filled, and more ideas generated. Turn it over to you guys.
If it's okay with the board, maybe I'll start with some of those basic changes for the general summer school program, and then pass it over to Samantha for the high school credit piece, so maybe do that. Yeah, I'm really excited to get this, this year's program rolling. I emailed staff this weekend, I include you guys on that as well, just kind of the general idea of dates, and some of the small changes that we're making. And then this year, we sent out a Google form to staff that are interested, so they're going to sign up and express interest that way. And it's pretty slick, I think I have already 25 staffers that have already expressed interest in helping out the program, so I think that Google form has been a positive thing, and easy way to kind of collect all that data and information. In the past, people had to fill it out on a piece of paper, and then kind of send it over to me, and stuff got lost or got goofed up, so it's kind of nice to have it all electronically. Yeah, basically, some of the changes, one would be that we're moving the high school and middle school remediation courses into the high school building, so we're going to keep Bessie on middle school for our K program, for those classes that are just those fund enrichment classes, and then having those remediation courses at the high school for middle school and high school students. So, you know, those are obviously great kids too, but we just felt, you know, with those little kids being in the building for summer school, we thought it'd be kind of nice to have some of those older students, just kind of have a section of their own in the high school, and that way, you know, we can, everyone's on the same page with kind of, you know, where those students should be in case they're wandering around in between classes or things. So we think that's going to be a positive change. And then kind of a little thing here, we're changing our lunch, and just shortened it up by five minutes this year. We felt the 30-minute lunchtime that we had was probably too long for kids, especially for summer, so we're just going down to 25 minutes for lunch for this year, and then tacking that extra five minutes onto that fourth hour class time. So, small change there, but I think that will work out.
And really quick, remember breakfast and lunch is free to anybody in the community that comes. Any kid that's in the community that comes, we'll get that all broadcast. Again, we qualified for that last year because of our increase in free reduced lunch, so that's available for any child in the community that would like to come for that at no cost. And that's going to be for the next four years, so it's a five-year thing, once we got it, and it will be evaluated, but the way the trend looks, I'm thinking that we'll probably qualify for that also in four years from now.
And then probably the other kind of big change is after having a year of leading the program last summer, it was great to kind of just see what's, I guess, the direction I want to take the program in this year, and looking to offer hunter safety, maybe some ATV safety, I know there's a, some service classes that we have to express, you have caravan, that they do some service work, that we are going to just see if there's some students interested in having that as part of their summer program. So, yeah, just kind of excited to see what new programs, or new class, I should say, pop up for the summer, and offer some different things, or maybe there were holes last, to last year's program. So, yeah, just kind of really excited about getting rolling again, and we'll get the booklets out to families, we're looking at end of March, and then have registration at the elementary school and middle school, again, where parents can just walk in, sign up right there, and have that face-to-face interaction, so in case there's a class that's filled up or something, they can, you know, have all that taken care of, and have those classes switched like we did last year, so we've heard some great feedback from, from parents, that that was really slick and easy to do, and so I think we'll do registration that way again. And kind of, yeah, the other major change would be one that I'll pass to Samantha here, just offering some high school credits for, or high school classes for credit, so.
Sure, we will again offer in the summer our credit recovery program using Odyssey Ware, and then also our remedial courses, looking at English, probably offering a section of physical science and history. But we're most excited about this year is trying to give, you know, kids again more opportunities to get some of the different electives. Sometimes we hear that those kids are taking Spanish band and choir, a couple of things that, you know, they wanted to take a project through the way class, or they wanted to take another English class, they just don't have room. So we threw it out there to our incoming freshmen, hey, would you be interested in taking US History over the summer for credit, and then you would not have to take that during the year as a freshman, and that would open up your schedule a little bit. And, you know, was kind of hoping that we would have, you know, five to 10 kids that we might be able to run the class, and we had 28. So we're very excited that we've had that many kids. Now, we have a couple that may not fit, because families are like, well, but we're going to miss part of it, and they really can't. They have to make a commitment. So Lynn is in process of working with me just to kind of create a form to say, okay, the class is running, it is going to be from 8 until 11, Monday through Thursday, three weeks is the first semester, next three weeks is the second semester, you know, can you make a commitment to that time? But very, very excited about that class, Tom Offy will be teaching that class. Two other classes proposed by Katie Crabbe and Dixie Jerko. Katie proposed a class called Major Authors and Film Adaptations, and trying to kind of blend the two. And again, that class was offered as an elective for kids who have that interest in English, but at the same time are thinking, you know, I've got to take the rigor in college prep, and maybe I don't, I don't get to try something else. And we've had 13 sign up for the major authors class, and so that, again, will run. Dixie proposed, Dixie is hopefully going to be going to our project through the way training the first half of summer, so the second half of summer, then she proposed a class very similar to like a CSI, forensic science, and again, another half-credit class for kids who are interested in the science field, and we've also had approximately 15 kids sign up for that class, and those are juniors and seniors. So all three of those classes look right now like they will be running, and we're excited about that. So kind of balance our yes remedial and credit recovery opportunities, and technically, kids could take, if you're a junior, senior, you wouldn't have to take the Odyssey Ware for credit recovery, you could choose to take the major authors or the science class as well. So excited about those opportunities for kids. One, just last change, if I can mention two, maybe that's not summer, but Kelly Maurer had offered to our seniors AP Government, and that was a class where kids would take government, their junior level required class, but then their senior year, they could choose to take an AP class. And we've only had two kids sign up for that, and, you know, Erin and I talked, and Kelly and I talked, and just really would like to see kids, you know, take the opportunity, and I felt that maybe it was because, hey, you know, we've had it as a junior, maybe we want to take something different. So we are right now in process of getting that out to our juniors to say to them, hey, to be juniors, would you rather, you know, take an AP government class versus your junior level required class? It'll still fit the requirement, but just see if it could be an AP level, like in hardest course. So I'm hopeful that that will also run that way, rather than offering to seniors.
With all the courses that we're adding, have we considered a possibility of early graduation at all? Any reason for that, students?
To be quite honest, it's not a smart decision on the basis of a student or parent. There are too many opportunities open. If you were a kid that completes all of your credits, you know, first semester, and you've gotten those, there's youth options, there's course options, there's school to work, there's a lot of things, you can get dual credit and be in there. I just, you know, I would, I would never recommend that to my child, because there's too many opportunities that are available there.
Sam, how do we do that with English being four years? Because you wouldn't be to that, at semester, correct? Unless obviously the summer, somehow you fit it in the summer part, but for the most part, if they into it, you wouldn't be able to do it correctly, because... part, if they into it, you wouldn't be able to do it correctly because it's four years, four, first and second.
You can have your two semester classes of English in first semester, it's a possibility.
It's a possibility. Another question I have is the weight training for credits. The course, because it's an elective that they have at school, in high school, and because they do it, Zach does a phenomenal job with Mr. Colby and others that go through it. And they need, they probably have more hours or equal or if not more than what's equal to getting credit. What is the thought about having that as elective during the summer? So then, again, it gives an option for people to take something else other than during the regular school year, they can take a different elective.
We have not discussed that one. I know FIAID staff and myself are very leery, to be honest, and Mr. Stanek knows this, you know, with our obesity, with health and wellness, you know, kids are allowed right now to take weight training class, lifetime in class more than once. And we have some who do, but I'm very concerned about kids just taking that in summer and not having the FIAID class throughout the year. Also, weight training actually does not meet the hour requirements in the summer because of lifting a couple of days a week for their time commitments. You know, like I mentioned, the US History Monday through Thursday, we need to, curriculum-wise to get that in, we need to have it taught from eight until 11, you know, so it's actually 12 hours a week to get that half-credit. So, you know, might be something for us to look into, but I, you know, I think there's other things like, you know, we're willing to look at the health, for example, in future as a class, but have some concerns with offering FIAID in the summer.
I just had a parent, and parents approached me a moment and they said, well, I don't know, I said, that's one. Actually, right away to Erin, I said, you know, before I forget, let me text you, not very quick, I text you, I got it to them, but just something to consider because kids do take it and not, not to replace it, but it's an elective. You know, obviously there's still the need requirements, maybe taking something else, maybe more of a help versus, but getting a summer weight training, which I encourage all kids to do and obviously they do it during, of course, because obviously the concerns of the obesity. I think would be a good opportunity to explore and see if that possibility is, if we're doing other classes, why not? I think it's considered, take a look at it and talk with the staff and say, I know the concern is probably we'll have less, less kids, but they can repeat it. The idea is you can repeat it and the kids that truly want to continue in that field are gonna take regardless be in the summer or it's gonna be in the fall or the spring semesters, I think it, just an option, just explore that.
Will you look at things in the future?
One of the things also is that I'm really, and I haven't heard this from anybody in the community or from the board, and I appreciate that whole idea of if you play a varsity sport that can count for your FIAID, but the FIAID class is so different as far as like rules and teamwork and fitness, that, that is some districts going like that. I just want to take time to thank the board for not, you know, for not going forward and looking at those things because it is such a different animal, appreciate that, so, thank you.
Yeah, one question on that. So a student, let's say they, they take the history class or whatever is accredited class in the summer. They say they're committed, a week later, they stop showing up. Is it a fail, is it a truance? I mean, what is it, do we treat that the same as a normal class, is that they just stop coming? I mean, they can pick up their credit to get here in school, is that?
What we're doing is trying to work through it, that's a really good question, right? Looking through all those things of, you know, kind of a, for example, our conversation has been if in the first week, all of a sudden, the student says or the parent says this isn't gonna work, you know, we can't do it, that we would allow them to drop a class within the first week without a WF. But if it's after the first week, you know, it could be a WF on their, on their transcript. Absolutely. The same for attendance, you know, I've had two moms email me and say, hey, you know what, one was a two or three-day vacation, the other one was a week, and unfortunately we just can't, we have to be very, very strict in summer, you know, because otherwise we're, we're setting ourselves up for trouble that way.
Looking at my daughter, everything sounds great, two months away.
Yeah, yeah.
And one of your friends are sleeping in and you decide, no, this isn't for me, what is that gonna be?
A couple of questions too, and one on the history. And I like that concept and being able to open up the schedule and that, but I, if my calculations are right, that 72 hours of instruction they're getting for the whole school year as opposed to taking it all through an entire school year is quite of a difference in time. And are we gonna, if you're, you're obviously gonna meet the hour requirement, but are they gonna learn as much, I guess to put it bluntly, through the summer course as they would if they took it through the school year or enough to be successful with that class or subsequent class?
And talking with Tom because he has taught it thematically this year and really trying to, you know, kind of refocus kids on projects. So there are gonna be some things that he's gonna ask outside of class, you know, of them. You know, we feel, you know, we're gonna try it and, you know, we feel like that we can cover what he needs to. You know, we're a little bit more concerned about, you know, maybe the English or math, especially because those are areas that we are tested on and, and many other reasons. But the history again, being that he's teaching it thematically, you know, he feels like he can do it and we've looked at a couple other schools who have offered like AP US History in the summer actually. Oshkosh and Appleton schools offer that and they do get everything covered even at an AP level.
Yeah, and that's revaluing. One of the things is, and Tom, when he was looking at doing this said, you know, when you look at kids in remediation and Adam, I think did a really nice job of explaining why we're separating remediation from the middle and high school from elementary. The people who have to remediation, the students normally aren't the most dedicated to school, that's why they're in summer school. But this is a whole different animal. When Tom had had those concerns and then Samantha got that list of 28 students and showed Adam and myself, of those 28 kids, probably 25 of them are 3.5 or above, I'm guessing, or they're, they're, they're just very accelerated, they want to have that opportunity for something else. So, that could also have an impact on how fast that class can go. And one of the things, I know that in the class is that, you know, when you have all the students learning at different levels, some of those basic half-two classes go at a different pace. So with the type of student, that might have an impact on how fast curriculum can be covered, which might do that, but like Samantha said, this, hey, this is our first time and who knows if it doesn't work and we find that there is that, that thing, then we'll have to reevaluate.
Again, the concern would be the next level class probably won't, because they're gonna cover different material, but, but maybe at major exam or whatever it's gonna be called in the future, if they're tested as juniors, are they gonna be shortened because they took a compacted version maybe of the class, history? I don't know, just, I guess the thought.
And that's why with history, we actually felt no in talking to schools and looking at it, you know, because everything that, you know, we're tested on is English and math. And, you know, the history just is a part of being a good reader. The ACT test, in fact, I just had this conversation with a student today that they're, you know, stressed about it next week. And I said to the student, you're a really good reader, I can show you numerous articles that say the kids who score best on the ACT are good readers because they can find the information that they're looking for. They're not necessarily the best math students, you know, and I think that's, you know, a little bit of misperception, it's the best readers who do the best on the ACT. So, yeah. And, you know, like, like we said, we're trying to learn from some of, you know, maybe the Oshkosh, Appleton schools who have done this for years. I mean, I know when I was there in 94, they were doing summer, you know, ECU US History.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other question I had there on the funding for the free breakfast and lunch, how does that work? Are we paying it upfront and getting reimbursed there?
Matter of fact, well, I don't know, ask Maria. I know that we don't, I don't know if we pay for it. I think airmark, do we pay and then we get refunded, does that not work?
We, well, we have to pay airmark. And, and then I do a claim just like I do throughout the regular school year, submit a claim to DPI and then we get the reimbursement.
Okay, here. There is such a thing as a free lunch? I mean, we're paid for it through taxes, but girls can eat.
Well, that's kind of one, two. So we get 300 million people pitching in.
Probably not 300 million, I'd say probably about 170 million. All right, that's all I had. All right, well, thank you, really exciting and, you know, we're, Maria, as we're talking, we have a little back channel, we're communicating. This could also be something, right now, we're not looking at it as to change the contract. You know, like right now, we have somebody full-time because they teach full-time during the year. Tom is going, Mathi's gonna be paid in summer school, paid for doing this in summer school. We might be looking at it, Tom, you know how Rosendale Brown was looking at year-round school? We, I don't know if, we're not getting to that point, but we may look at educators who teach year-round, meaning they could have 80% in the fall and winter or fall and in the, fall and the spring semester and then 20% in the summer semester. So they'd be 100% teacher, but they'd be different. Right now, we're kind of looking into that and seeing how that would work. The neat thing about this, here are 28 kids that we're gonna be able to count with one teacher that will help us to increase our aidable count, which we wouldn't have had before. So that's a big deal. So, that summer school could start to become more of a revenue generator for us too. We're gonna have to balance that because I was thinking about that too, just as you're thinking, so. That financial impact, we'll see how that all works out.
And I'll have to check with DPI if classes for credit can be charged, you know, can be treated as summer school because then we get the revenue for each hour.
Yep.
Class, yeah.
And that's all, that's it, that's that, I wouldn't say creativity, but utilizing the laws of how we can utilize, maximize our resources and get more and more programs for our kids and keep staffs. All right, future board items, anybody have anything? I know Samantha will look into the credit and then.
Weighted scale grades. I said that as well.
Oh, okay.
A higher, you know, obviously.
Tougher class, be a higher grade?
Tougher class is a higher grade, someone, a parent asks me, you know, what that is, probably a noise for coverage.
Yes, Mr. Kellogg.
We had a little bit of those discussions and.
One of the things before, well, even whatever yearly, here's what I'm hearing too, when you had said something Samantha, when that came up, that resonated with me a little bit, is instead of a one, two, three, you have more of a lotto system? So, yeah, so you have a different, so it's not like the weight, the weighted doesn't matter as much as you graduate in this group. So you don't get the one through 10, you just graduate in this group, which eliminates that whole thing, is this class more than this class is more than this class, correct?
Yeah. The hard part of the weighted system and a lot of the arguments against it are, you know, who is someone to say that there's not, you know, if, if, if I'm an art major, why do you take art classes? And so who's to say that that's not best for me and rigorous for me versus taking Spanish one, two, and three? You know, everybody, rigor's different, there's a, I mean, I can, I can certainly research and share with you a lot of the articles against weighted grading and we've had a little, little discussions in the past five years and are not in favor of it as a staff. So I certainly can bring that forward to you to share.
I could add, historically, the staff going way back since I've been on the board 21 years now, it always felt that same way. You know, the concept, kind of who's gonna play God and decide, basically Samantha just said, which, you know, physics or, you know, something like that, AP physics sounds like, oh, that should be weighted higher, but for that, you know, that group of kids, that's a tough class, but, you know, there's other students who a higher level class in their track should be weighted for them perhaps too, so, I don't know.
One thing we're finding too is standards-based grading, is that grades, and even with college admissions, and I'm interested to find out from Samantha and our counselors as it goes on, starting to get this feeling that grades don't matter as much as your competencies and what course you take, because grades can be inflated and already college gets that, it's what you get on that ACT. What courses have you shown that you're good at? You know, and that grade point average of 4.0 really doesn't mean a whole bunch if you don't have the transcript that shows how you got that 4.0. The colleges are very aware of that, so. Don't you say too, do you?
I actually over the summer talked to a Madison admission counselor type person and they told me that a 3.0 or even like a 2.8 can be just as good as a 4.0 and they explained to me, they really don't even look at GPA anymore, they look at test scores, they look at what courses you took and they look whatever, whatever else you've done. You may have a 4.0, but you could have a 3.0, you needed student council, key club and like everything else in school and took a hard class, graded a 4.0, you may have hard classes and that 3.5 will get in any day of the week compared to 4.0. So, it's no longer just grades, what you do and what class you take.
That's what we say to kids, you know, if you're worried about taking Spanish 3 or 4 or calculus because you're gonna get a B or C, take it. You know, it's much better to get a B or C rather than say, I'm not gonna take math my senior class or it's my senior year because I don't wanna miss something.
And that's one of the things too with the math classes where we're starting to see kids get pushed a little more in our math and they're taking more rigorous courses and that matters. You know, that matters where they're taking like, I know of one, like that, like I know one kid that's already pre-calculus is a sophomore and then getting four credits there and then calculus as a junior, get four more credits there and then something else as a senior, all of a sudden, you're taking probably junior, senior level college courses and you're paying very small amount if anything. And I, it's that dual credit idea and it's, once you get it, we're starting to find it so that's, it's interesting. There's always this perception that I've got, look, this kid's cheating me off stuff because they have a 4.0, but they don't, they take fluff classes and that's kind of.
That's well taken because, you know, listening to just the conversation here and I was not educated enough to make, give them the reason why. And I said, I said, I would bring it forward. Deinformation is just provided here, it makes sense. What you said Damian too, what colleges are looking for, they look at that more. So then GPA usually way back when, yeah, GPA counted a lot, but no longer, as you were saying, so it doesn't really matter, it's what you do over above your schoolwork and how tough the courses are. It's a good message, I'm guessing SAP does that with the kids when they come in and orientation, letting them know, you know, everyone's worried about GPA. I think the message should be, yes, it's important, but more importantly is how well you do on these tests and how well you do outside of that, your volunteer time and all those other clubs. I think that's the message that you get along, not only the kids, but I think the parents because obviously the parents see, view differently and when they come up and talk to them, I said, it's a good question, I will forward it on and I think kids will have some good information to pass along.
And you're good, and here's the thing, couple of weeks or much, you're gonna be a community member and then you're gonna be sitting here, anybody have any comments? And you're gonna have to come and say that that time.
I don't know, we'll see about that. I mean, see, something could trigger me to come talk, could happen.
All right, any, and then, anything else?
Two things, one, one is a board discussion pursuant to our conversation the other day about the movies.
Yes.
Should we have a conversation at board level about?
Yeah, I think what we should do superintendent's report, Maria and I were talking about that too. Number one, we have to put that money aside and fund 80 for half to fund it. Now with the new rules and laws and things, we can't, that wouldn't fly. That's something Shank would look at and say red flag, so we can't do that. And then, we need to really sit, because right now, that's one of the things I have, I have to schedule or book, we have Katniss Ever, Getters, first part of two, whatever that was called, coming up this weekend.
Mockingjay.
Mockingjay, that's in part one or whatever, sorry. But they're getting harder and harder, they're not, that cellulite, they're not printing 35 millimeters, so we're, we're getting desperate here. So we have to have that conversation if we want to continue forward with that, it's gonna be an investment. So I think that is a good thing. What, Maria, what I'll ask you is if you could look at the financials for like the past five years for the movie theater, what that looks like? And then, I think what I can do is in April, we'll put it on the agenda, just have a, no, nothing that we would make a decision, but get the information out in March, we'll do it in March, that we'll just talk about, is this something we're gonna pursue? Because it would be an investment and it's gonna be one of those investment that just off the top of my head, I don't think is gonna pay off financially as much as it could pay off in different areas. So I think that's a really good thing to have the board have that discussion. And I'd have a hard time when we're looking at a deficit and cutting its funding to say to you, hey, let's not support this teacher's assistant or this educator and instead, let's get a digital projector. So we'd have to find out where those funds would come from and stuff. So I think, I really, I think that would be a great conversation at this level that would then give us kind of some idea of where we should go and what we should do because it will have implications. And once again, the money's something, but the reality of it is, is there other benefits and what does that money look like? Well, what other benefits and what, what does that bring? So I think that, that's a great idea. How about we put that on in March during the superintendent's report to have a really good conversation?
Can we add attendance also?
Yeah.
In addition to numbers or, you know, profit or it'd just be nice to know how many people are being affected in the community.
Sure.
By having this.
Can you do that for us, Ms. Pritchett?
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else?
I sent you an email on the 18th, I don't know if you want to do that next month.
Help me again.
Uh-huh. The, uh, just a minute, get the name right, School Choice Wisconsin Open Records Request.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, we haven't had any requests there, I think they're just hitting the big guys right now. Um, and, uh, what I can do, our policies are updated, and, uh, we don't have, here's, here's what I found out initially, we don't have a student directory. Right? You don't have a student directory at Friendship or ELC where you give it out to kids, here's kid's name, a lot of schools have that. Like I know Lake Shore, where my, you, there's a student directory, okay? We don't have that, so in essence, since we don't have that, there's no open request for something that doesn't exist. Then they would be getting it from our student information system, and I don't know if we have to do that, but I'll look more into that. Because they are, there's an opt-out, like they're changing their policies in different areas, you probably read about where, just like our photo policy where everybody can get their picture taken unless you tell us not to. I think there's some opt-out things, I think this will flush out as time goes, and I really think, just from a political standpoint, that whole asking for it, that group that was asking wasn't tied to any private schools. They're just doing this out of the goodness of their heart, to help out private schools, whatever that means. Um, so, but I'll definitely look into that to see if we do need to have something that we can be proactive and have a policy.
Frankly, I was alarmed that it was legal for the group to ask for names, addresses, and phone numbers and the days intended of students. And that they were within their legal right to ask for it, and if the school had that assembled, or they would have to give it to them. Unless there was some safety valve in place that said, I as a parent, don't want my student's information released, check here. And then it would be released, because this organization, if banks and major insurance companies in this country can't keep digital information safe, what's to say that this outfit, once they get it, is gonna be able to keep it safe? So, I think we have an obligation to protect our students' identities by doing everything that we can, including ask parents to say, we recommend that you check this box that says that we're not gonna.
I'll find what we can do, but I think that's a great thing when we look at the beginning of the year, and one of the things that we'll do in order is parents come in to have that policy, they can check, we can have that on, I think that's a great idea.
I was seeing some mixed comments about whether or not they can, you can go back right now and ask if they wanna opt out, or if it can only be done at the beginning of the year. You know, cause maybe if we do get a request in the timeframe while we're waiting to release it, we could ask the parents and let them opt out if they want.
Yeah.
And at first, somebody, I don't know if it was Fond du Lac or Green Bay, said they couldn't, but then later on, they were saying maybe they would let them opt out yet, so.
And if you don't give the information, once again, that somebody would have to sue over something, and one, one of the most ironic things here is remember the conservatives said that they don't want the smarter balance and stuff, because it's taking all this information, getting it together, and then somebody would have it about these kids, and about what's going on, and now it's that same group that wants all this information about kids so that they can give it out to people. You know what I'm saying, I mean, there's somewhat, that whole argument of a smarter balance and, and common core, and how this is gonna take all this data and all that, it, it's, it's very hypocritical. To say the least. Uh, but so, but I, I agree, and I think that regardless of what we do, or what, what, if we get requested or not, I think that's something that can make us stronger, if at the beginning of the year, you can opt out, if anybody asks for your child's information, you don't want us to give it to you. I think that's something we can, I can look in legality of that and get that rock and roll.
Yeah, we do that, I don't know if we still do, but we have to do that to the military services, right, the branches, um, used to get that information and send propaganda to students. I know my kids all received it throughout the high school years.
You're getting it Damian?
Oh, Air Force Marines. Doesn't help, I was looking at the army at one point, but still.
Oh, wait, excellent, anything else?
Were there any on graduation, we getting ready to, yeah, getting a few questions.
Oh, I didn't have that on here. Son of a gun.
We, I, I can tell, I, I don't have exact numbers, but we are very split between Memorial Day weekend and the following Sunday. And I have a few actually for the Friday, as someone asked, that I put on there, but, um, it's very split, so I, I, I apologize to neither one of us.
I never thought, but here's what I'm thinking, this might be the easiest, that we, that would save everything.
Fifteen, right?
Yeah, sixteen, so Samantha's mindset in the high school is that even the seniors wouldn't come back after Memorial Day weekend. So, there'd be those days, so they wouldn't come back. So, they're gonna graduate, so that their last day would be the Friday before Memorial Day, and if we had graduation on the fifth, they'd just come back on that Friday for graduation, practice. So, it wouldn't impact having, like, like, I could see the seniors saying, well, we gotta go to school all the way to the end. I don't think we'd do that to the staff right now, because seniors pretty much now expect to be out a little bit earlier, and it's easier on everybody, I think. So, even if it, if it would be tied, and I'll bring this up in March, I totally spaced that, because we didn't have it, so I apologize. But I would recommend if it stays tied right now, that we would stick to what we said the first Sunday in, in June, and if it's tied like that, the seniors still wouldn't come for that week. But we'd have it as that first Sunday in June, not on Memorial Day weekend, then we pretty much stay with what we were doing anyways, if it's that close, what would you say?
Doesn't matter to me.
Alright, and then you can, then, then the board can say, hey, first Sunday Memorial Day weekend, but I think that key part, when you told me, no, the kids wouldn't come back for that, was kinda like, oh, that changes things a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're.
Did you say that there was a discussion of an alternate date, such as a Friday?
Yeah, didn't we ask that question?
But I, there was nothing that was really getting any legs on that, so I wouldn't even.
I mean, the other two, the, the other two are stronger, but I, I was surprised, I did have, I think, five people, you know, and they wrote comments on there, absolutely, this works best, blah, 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 whatever, but.
Been down that, right?
Yes, three people were supposed to get fifteen different answers.
Yeah, great. Alright, so how about, I'll bring that in March, and if the, everything stays the same, what I think our recommendation will be the Sunday the fifth, which will be that first Sunday, which we've always done anyways, seniors won't come back, don't have to mess with Memorial Day weekend, be golden, we've taken due diligence, be good to go.
I just think parents want the answer, that's all I've heard, said, I really don't care what the date is, they just said they wanna know what it is, and I think if we could explain why, why it is and when it is, I don't think they'll care.
Yeah, it just would've been nice to get more responses.
Yes, it would've, so, obviously, all you can say is you tried to communicate, it wasn't there, therefore, decision will be made here, whatever.
Then we'll make it in March.
Sounds like a year and a half away, I mean, you can throw a party together pretty quick if, uh, you have to. Well, it depends on what you have for flooring and the dance, you know, these things are getting expensive.
Nobody really cares, it doesn't matter, here, as we ask the question, this whole, it makes people care, and that's why it's.
I would say, what I would recommend is somebody asks that, say, you know, looking at the dates in June, uh, the two Sundays are pretty equal, and understanding that, the way that, that, that right now currently board has made decisions, past practice, the first Sunday in June, so if it is like that, that's, you know, be looking forward to that, so that's what I'd say.
I, I think tomorrow, you know, sometime, um, we'll all use the number of where it's at.
Yeah. So, we'll do, we'll do, we'll bring that up March, say there'll be definitely a decision in March, and it's gonna be one of those two days. And if it's really tight, which it looks like right now, we haven't had, we've had more apathy than we've had interest, would you say?
Yep.
Which means then we'll probably go back to past practice, which would be the first Sunday in June. And then, so the students don't get all freaked out, they still wouldn't come.
Well, they were really split too, though, me, like, the kids, I think, like you said, the main part was like, what day are we done, and like, you're done the same day. You don't want to hear any longer, it's okay.
Yeah, it's okay, they're done, alright, anything else?
Can I just clarify to you, Ryan, I looked it up in, uh, Corvus Industries, it's a DVA of VR bleachers.
Okay, well, okay.
So, that's what that was.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, and then just really quick, Adam, with the support of Samantha, did a great job, and we got a ten thousand dollar a year grant for Project Lead the Way. And that's what got us rocking and rolling at the high school, so well done guys, great work. Melanie and her team, it was almost like, uh, a bad thing, we started Project Lead the Way before we went for a grant, because you can't, uh, but they're getting, they're looking at some other monies there, and that Project Lead the Way is, is really, I think, an interesting that people really like, because it's project-based, engineering, science, math. Um, I said those wrong stem, in the wrong order, uh, STEAM they call it now, because you throw art in there. So, but, so great work guys, great work on that.
I saw on the news, uh, they had a VEX competition someplace, did we participate in that?
Yeah, oh, we got trophies up the, the Wazoo coming in, and Lee Score, I don't know if you guys know Ken Stefani? He's a very dedicated, hard-working person, he's gone Mach nine with his hair on fire with VEX robots, and he's about ready to step down. He has concerns, so there's been a lot of meeting and talking, and, and they said, well, can this be a, uh, a, um, uh, a, a position, a coaching position, and I gave Brandon and, and Ken the thing of how you go about making it that, like, uh, Jean's gone through and done. Um, so Lee is taking over and gonna be the, I think, the, the person right now with VEX Robotics, and I wouldn't be surprised if he doesn't, and I'm gonna tell him, because there's a lot of time commitment, it's really having a positive impact, uh, with a lot of kids that he'd come by, and maybe we might have that as an extra duty back in the future.
Didn't we do that last month?
We did that with Tom for Bots IQ also.
Oh, that's a.
That's Bots IQ, that's a different thing, that's like high mileage car, that's, that's, it's like Dan, remember that, he did that, but that was part of the curriculum, but it's extra on top of, so. Yep, so it's a little different, but, so cool, yep, VEX, we're all in. It's all the trophy, if you want to see, there's a tro, where was the trophy, is it in the office?
Uh, it's in my, uh, in the office, was that Saturday?
I'm not, there, there, there's a bunch of them, I wanna.
It was like in the last couple of days.
Yeah.
The trophy's.
Ice fishing.
Ice fishing, yeah, fourteenth out of forty.
Sixteen.
Out of sixteen, six forty.
Forty-four, forty-five.
Sixteenth out of forty, we did really well, did really well ice fishing. Alright, any questions you have for the admin team?
Any questions?
Alright, rocking and roll.
Moving on, under room business, first item is discuss and consider increasing substitute pay.
Um, thank you, Mr. Duffy, we've talked about this, there is a shortage, we are getting people that are going to be substitute teaching that don't have any teaching formal background, which, they're still good, and we're gonna help and train them, get them in. But we're starting to see more and more teachers say, I've had three teachers in the past week say, you know, I get paid more here, should really look at doing something. And, um, looking at, it is a financial, like you saw, there's about twenty-four thousand dollars. One thing is this year, we're seeing our teachers not utilize our subs as much as they have in the past, which is a positive. But if we wanna get the best subs in the classroom, and one of the things I'm sure Damian and I know all of our administrators will say, if you don't have a high-quality person in there that can execute the plan, that day's lost. But if you have a high-quality, respected sub in that room, education continues to go on as it did before. And what my recommendation is, is we're paying ninety dollars, and then a hundred, and then one ninety-three seventy-two is based on a starting salary, which is thirty-seven thousand dollars divided by a hundred ninety-one. What I'd recommend, and this would put us, and these are numbers from fall, I know that there's, that districts have gone up already in order to combat this. Um, but I would recommend that we go to a hundred and five a day, starting March first, and then if any teacher throughout the year, substitute teaches twenty times, okay, doesn't that be consecutive, they would become what we would call a preferred sub, so they would get, like a Sandy O'Loughlin, they would get a hundred and twenty dollars a day. A day, sorry, a day. Oh, we're going to the substitute.
Sign me up.
Yeah, there you go, hey, you're already subbing, you can't come back, yeah. Um, so it'd be a day, it'd be a day, and then that whole long-term would not change, it'd be what it is. So, that's what my recommendation, Steve, you might be able to articulately speak about the substitute pool and what this might do?
Well, yeah, I think it's like a gas price war in the old days, that as each district goes up, they're finding out what other districts are doing, and that's good for subs, you know, good subs, I guess, so. A hundred and five, I'm getting at Rosendale, a hundred and one fifty at Fond du Lac, and if it's even with Fond du Lac, I think subs will go in the other place every time. Lesser retired Fond du Lac teacher, they seem to love the place, so. Yeah, I, I think it's, it's good to do that, we gotta keep up, because the, the choice, my, I think I mentioned this, my phone rings every morning at five oh two from Fond du Lac, but their ASAP phone system, and I'm part of it, the program, so I, they're looking every day, Fond du Lac, the lady Gloria told me, they look for fifty to sixty subs every day they need throughout the district on average. That goes up and down, so, um, you know, and they're stuck sometimes, they, they don't get subs for positions, and then they're paying.
Doubling classes.
They cover during their prep, and, and that, so, I think it's money well spent. Yeah, you know, and another thought, just, and this is just philosophical more or less, but it kinda works both ways with being productive as a sub. With having the teachers allow the sub to do more, especially if they build some trust, or they get to know the subs that keep coming back. Because, you know, you really don't have to have a lot of talent as a sub to show a video, it's gonna be a waste today, pretty much, anyway, but just as example, today I was able to actually do some stuff with the kids that didn't move as far as the regular teacher, classroom teacher would have for tomorrow, but I got them, you know, moving a little bit and, and, you know, involved with the concept that we were doing in class, so. So, I think they should be encouraged to allow the sub to try some more stuff too, so.
And I really think this will have an impact on our administrators, get some high-quality people in there, say, I'll come, so I've gone twenty, so I, I could think of some subs that maybe have not been in this district because of that, that might now look at our district, and then they get over twenty times, all of a sudden, hey, I'm coming out. Because what I've heard over and over, like Joan Blatt said, I've heard over and over from teachers how much they like something in our district, because the kids are, I, it's not cliche, ready, respectful, and safe. They really are, and that, I think, is a big deal.
That enhancer is really good too, because if, if you're doing several districts, and you know you're getting closer to, to twenty times, and you'll get paid more, you probably you know, take the Norfond like job first before, and it's different districts.
And the beautiful thing is we can shut people out, if they're getting in, they're not doing a good job, we don't need to utilize them in the district, so I'm hoping that this has a positive thing for, for our kids and our teachers too, because the teachers will feel more confident, like you said, and let them do more, so.
How often do we get a short-term sub, just out of curiosity?
Well, how?
How often do we do a short-term sub?
What, you mean for a day?
Yeah, I mean, like fifty a day.
Uh, how many do you have at Friendship a day?
It depends upon what we have going on, but it can be anywhere from one to, you know, if we're doing, we have regrouping for interventions, that, that's six people that we need to, to have, so.
So, we have subs in the district?
Every day.
Every day.
Yeah, and that's just.
Cliff, is, on the, what do you say goes from the one oh five to the one twenty after twenty, does it start over then the following year, or are you gonna keep them on to prefer?
What do you guys think?
I think if they're preferred, I'd much rather see them why start over again, but that's up to you, I mean.
I don't know, why do you? Fond du Lac starts over every year.
They do.
I don't know if there's much difference between, uh, that sub, but.
I don't know, I mean, I'm thinking.
I just wanna know the.
Here, I think, uh, Bill Hinkle, he'd probably come out here anyways, but they know that if he's here, although the Pepcrane's gone, so, they, we actually might have consistent plan teachers. Uh, but I mean, you know, I think that's a good point, maybe, would it be, I mean, if they've proven themselves as a sub the year before, what are, now we gotta get you for twenty more times to prove it again?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's preferred, preferreds?
I would say that. Preferred list, yeah, I'd put on a preferred list for the following year, and just tell them, you come back next year, you're starting at the one twenty versus having to restart. I just, that would be my thoughts, maintain really good. If we're all about trying to get quality teachers in, then we oughta.
Put their money where they're at.
Well, look, what it is. Preferred list, once you're on, you're on.
Alright, there's some districts, bigger districts, and I've seen this more, I guess, on the walk here, but where they'll, um, have some all-star people assigned to, just a
full-year contract as a sub.
We've talked about that.
Report every day, wherever they need, you know, to get assigned to and stuff.
Yeah, we talked about that, but I don't know if we would have, that would get really messy, now you're talking thirty-seven in benefits. Yeah. Alright, so what we've, so, well then, I guess what I would recommend is that this, but then once you reach your preferred status, you stay that until told differently. So, it would carry on year after year, so you would start over at one oh five, the next year you'd stay at one twenty, that'd be easy for Bonnie too.
Yes.
Was it cost figure here in annual or just from March first to?
Annual.
June, okay.
What we did is I asked Maria, what did we use last year for subs, she gave me that number, and then we said, well, this would be a seventeen percent increase, so what's that number times seventeen? Not a hundred percent accurate, depending on per cert and preferred, it could be more, then if we use subs less, like right now, we're looking at utilizing less subs, our budget is, we've used less now than before, you know? And another thing too is the atmosphere we have for, like that article, that editorial I wrote, I am so, so ingrained in believing in that idea of create an atmosphere where people wanna be, and they're not gonna be going as much. The majority of our subs that come in is because we send people to different places to do stuff. I, I would, I'd like to do, I don't think we have as many sickness and illness as maybe some other ones, we, we should do a study on that, but I mean, we have people who need that. But there's a difference between a sub that we get because we have training or regrouping than a sub we get because somebody's ill or sick. So, cool, alright.
I'll make that motion with that, with that, maybe stay in the preferred list at the one twenty.
And then Maria, would you put together some sort of correspondence to our subs and have Maria send that all out, if you could? That this is what it is, and, and what we'll do is that, uh, should we have them restart twenty times now, or if you've been twenty times already, you start it? We can talk about that, we'll flush that on.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent, then we'll make sure we publicize this so we get, so everybody knows, and maybe it'll make it easier on you guys, it gets a good one.
I'll for that.
Alright.
Uh, Steve, are you ready, when you're ready, we'll call. This is gripping. You would be, you'd be retained, or you'd be placed on the preferred sub list at a rate of one hundred and twenty dollars a day for you. Unless you, that we have a protocol, they know that they come back, so.
What if you get one that's over twenty days, and, uh, it's not very good, but you just need subs, and you pull them in anyway?
Well, I think that's a last resort, you have the option, I mean, obviously, I mean, you know, you're looking for someone. I guess, I guess, is that person better, because obviously, at that point, you're looking for someone to fill a spot versus you couldn't get anyone else, so is it better to have that person? I mean, that's gonna be an administrative decision.
And it's teacher decision, they can block and put preferred subs, all this, that's where ASAP's beautiful. And if we gotta, we, here's the deal, there's some teachers right now, or they're substitute teachers, that over whatever, you would not want them in your building, and they don't get allowed to. that over whatever, you would not want them in your building, and they don't get allowed through, so.
No matter what they're in, they're just basically tell them, if it's determined, not even saying that, it's a the school will evaluate your effectiveness, and you'd be placed on this list or not, you'd be notified.
How about that? I love that. So effective subs is deemed by the district that have served over 20 times will get this. Yes. How about that? Effective subs deemed by the district who have served over 20 times will get this. So if you're not an effective sub, then you don't get that. But we still might need to use you because you fill a spot. There's some. Would we use them 20 times though?
We're going to make call. If one teacher says they're effective, the next one says.
No, we tell them, and if they don't like it, that's just the way it is, I think.
Because obviously, you don't want that person there anyways, so they're going to say, okay, well, they go.
But even that language, effective is deemed by the district with over 20 times, and if they have a question, what does that mean? Then they probably don't want effectiveness.
I mean, in my opinion, if someone's that bad, we don't want them here anyways.
Yeah.
We're not going to say, uh, you're bad, but very much you come, teach your kids. I think, I mean, if, if you're good enough to come to our doors, I think you should, you should, you should do 20 days. Once you're there, you're there. Whether or not the frequency, if we want, we want to use you is up to us, but if we need you, I think. That's my opinion.
Well, if you look at 20, 20 days and we can, yeah, what would that be?
20 days is a lot of days. If you have somebody that, I mean, I.
Like, you could probably think of your, your superstars on one, or your non-superstars on one hand, you probably called them in like four times, and every time you're like, "Ooh, but I'm in a pinch," and I know that they won't hurt anything, at least they're benign at best. But I hear you. Well, yeah, why even get into that?
You control it by the 20 times.
Right.
You'll know how many times you utilize that person.
Not sometimes. Well, sometimes, we control it by making actual extra phone calls. Um, ASOP doesn't necessarily, uh, attend to all of that. So sometimes it's like, okay, we're going to make these phone calls before we even consider any option that wouldn't meet our needs in terms of having a substitute in the classroom.
Well, I mean, if the subs are effective, I will want them in the district. Okay. I mean, the idea is, I mean, I know you're hurt sometimes for bodies, but then is that really what you want to do, a body versus an effective? That's what we.
We, well, what we do is we have benign. We have some subs that are benign, meaning that there's just, you're, you're there, you're responsible for the safety of the kids, and the kids pretty much manage themselves. And right, with the shortage that we have sometimes, there isn't many of them out there. I think, I think if we just put it as deemed by the district, then we can always just pull that out, but if we got somebody we don't like, we could say, boom. But for the majority, it's not going to be an issue.
Sometimes it's going to happen, but there's going to be a few you want.
Have you ever considered starting with a meeting, and I know that just adds to everything at the beginning of the year?
Oh, I'd love to do that.
Meeting with subs and tell them what some of the expectations are?
Yep.
Because I, I hear from kids where I am about certain subs, and we were just talking here on the side, that, you know, they give you a paper or a packet to work on, and then sit at the desk and play on the computer or read the newspaper or something, and where they, you know, maybe not be able to teach a lot of it, but they could go around and ask kids, "How are you doing? Are you getting it done? Are you doing this or that?" And, you know, maybe talk to them more about those expectations.
Yeah. I think that we, I talked to Sharon Simon, Melanie and I met with Sharon and, uh, and Ms. Brocker at their business manager. We're going to do that this, this, this fall, definitely. Because we're going to have more people that have never taught before, have a four-year degree, and at least have a handbook. I got it from Fond du Lac. They sent it as a PDF, but I'm going to pull one of those. Hey, do you have this as a Word document? It's about time we borrow somebody else's. We can make it our own, so we're good to go. All right.
Are we good with that change in language?
Yeah. All right.
I did, and Pete was second. Mr. Chizin was second.
All right.
All right.
Duffy?
Yes.
Chizin?
Yes.
Collap. Har, yes, and Kila?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Go and tell all of your subs that you like that this is happening. And 120 days isn't retro. Starts March 1st, because we got to save a little money as much as we can, right?
Yep.
All right, cool. But the 105 will start about March 1st. Actually, March 2nd, because March 1st is a Sunday.
All right. Move along. Next item is discuss and consider adoption of resolution for the updated bylaws and policies of the school district of North Fond du Lac.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. You could see in here that I listed some policies that have changed since Ryan and I met. Most of them are just, um, like adding Adam. When we have compliance officers, we had Debbie, but we needed a male also, so Adam's also a compliance officer. You can see that there's arbitrage, that bonding reissues, which really is going to help us out also with our, um, with our, uh, with our financial situations, and we needed to actually quote from that, even though it wasn't official, that we have some guiding principles. So there's nothing really big that you can see there. By signing this document, I'm just cleaning up, uh, some spelling and stuff. What'll happen is, is within two months, two and a half months, all of these will be published online. We'll also get a hard copy one, and then we will have all of our official policies. And then if there's any, because I know not everybody reviewed every single one, right, and I went through them, I went through them a couple of times. But as we go through, if there's ever a policy that you're like, you know, this wasn't the intent, or maybe we missed this, we can always change those policies. But by getting this done, this would be all then published online within two, two and a half months. Then what we can do is, as we do our new handbooks, we can tie these policies to those dynamically in the handbooks, and we should be good to go. Also, this would, this also then meets also the requirement that Samantha had brought up. Well, didn't we do the first reading of our, um, of our, our technical excellence scholarship, and this is part of that whole thing, so this is technically the second reading, because this would then adopt everything that we have.
We didn't change pretty much anything.
Maybe.
Went over everything, and if we pulled it out, if we needed, and I don't think there's been that, and most of it was added because it's something we had to have because of the name changes and it was mandated, so.
Sounds good.
This is going to be so cool to have that. Do you know who's going to love his marine? I'm going to love it. I mean, just to have all that stuff at your fingertips, and you can pull that out, and we have that, and, and you can search for it, and it's there. And it's all the number system then. We're going to be into the number system.
You make that motion. I'll second that. Motion, mine, Eli, seconded by Mr. Chizin.
Okay.
Now I guess, now it's anticipation.
Okay, Eli?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Har, yes, and Chizin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Discuss and consider changing of May's or meeting date to Monday, May 11, 2015.
That is just, um, two things. Number one, I don't think we want to meet on, uh, Memorial Day. Number two, this is something that I, uh, that we've done consistently for the past three years after Act 10, because all contracts now, remember, I'd be coming with a list for you right now in the old days. Now it's May 15th that they have to issue, so this works perfectly. I know it's quick, right after our April meeting, it's only two weeks. Um, but it, it fits perfectly at that time, and then we can get the contracts issued at that time. If there's any layoffs or non-renewals, we can do it right there also. And it also means not having them to meet at Memorial Day. If we would go on the 18th, we'd meet, we'd miss that state statutory 15th day of May.
I'll make that motion.
Will second.
Second by Mr. Eli. Any discussion? Seeing none. I made a motion, then Ryan was second. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Duffy?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Chizin?
Yes.
Har, yes, motion carried.
Item four, discuss and consider the extra duty contract for Kerry, is it?
Nitz.
Kerry Nitz, BAM's track coach.
Uh, lives in the community, has kids that have friendship. Uh, was an athlete in high school, highly recommended from, um, from Mike. Uh, she grew up having to deal with Dave's brother-in-laws or father. So that, I think, also shows a resiliency that Ms. Nitz has. She's a very positive, cool person, and I think she'll do a great job as an addition to our coaching. That's Junior's daughter.
Did she go to school here or someplace else?
You know where she went to high school?
When they get married.
The Holstein, yeah. She was a Husky. Right, the Siamese.
I'll make that recommendation. Hosted by Mr. Chizin?
I'll say.
Seconded by Mr. Har. Roll call.
Chizin?
Yes.
Har, yes. Eli?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
I'll make the motion for a jury. Eight forty-seven?
I'll second.
Second by Eli.
So, Eli, Duffy?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Chizin?
Yes.